This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, I'll call the meeting to order and welcome everyone this warm summer afternoon. And I believe we have Gabe, are you taking minutes this evening?
Yes ma'am.
Okay, would you like to do a roll call please?
Yes your honor, Counselors Coburn.
Here.
Nessie Johnson.
Here.
Alex Johnson.
Here.
Callum.
Here.
Olson.
Here.
Sykes.
Yep.
All counselors present, your honor.
Okay, thank you so much Gabe. And then business from the public, there wasn't anyone that had submitted that they had written comments. But is there anybody that is online that was wanting to bring up an item under business from the public? Okay, not seeing anybody. I do want to acknowledge that I do see we have some budget committee members attending. And because we on our second item at 4:30, which we might get to sooner, would be talking about our budget impacts. I do see that Sue Bolden is on and I think Terry Vernig I saw. And is there any other budget committee members that I'm missing?
I'm here, but I'm not, I'm just on my phone, Colleen Keller?
Oh hello Colleen. Anyone? Any other budget committee members? Okay, all right, we have three, thank you so much, and there could be some that might later as we get towards that item. Okay, then our first business is parks and recreation fees. We did talk about this at our last work session and counsel, if you remember, you sent it back to do a little bit more information for you. So Kim, would you like to walk us through it?
Wonderful.
You are?
Can you see me and hear me?
Yep, I can, yeah, yeah.
All right, well, thank you very much for having me back. So I wanted to bring to your attention, what we had discussed last time was at our senior center, the idea of having a resident, non-resident rate, and if we needed a commercial and nonprofit rate. And throughout the conversation, there was a little bit of changes in direction that we would like to go. And so we went back and chatted with staff and kind of looked at what our competitors. And I wanted to bring back two options for you today. So if you scroll down to page seven of your packet, that'll bring you to some of the fees that we're discussing. And so after chatting with staff and after continuing to do research, we have provided two options for you to choose from. Option A would be our recommendation, as that moves forward not only with best practices, but we feel it also best serves. Ooh, there we go, it just popped up on the main one, lovely. And we feel like it best serves our community as well. So in this option, if you don't mind just scrolling down two more pages.
More.
And then one more please, there you go. So in this one, we are recommending that we still do keep a nonprofit rate. As we looked around and 90% of our competitors provide a nonprofit rate. Nonprofits would get this rate if they're using it for a meeting or if they're doing a fundraising activity. We did add a private non-resident rate. Previously, we just had a resident rate, it didn't matter if you're in town or out of town. So we did break that up, so that way those folks who are in town and who are helping to support with tax dollars are getting that discount and that benefit. And we are still recommending keeping a commercial rate as 80% of our competitors do that. And the reason why we're saying that is for the commercial rate, it wouldn't necessarily be if a company wanted to come and do their Christmas party or wanted to do something for their staff. That would not be it at all, they would essentially get the private resident rate. But this is for when they are directly interested in marketing to our patrons. So at our senior center, this can look like other tour providers coming and directly selling spots on their tour buses. It could be insurance providers, it could be medical service providers. When you take it out into our parks, it's sometimes events that actually charge a cover fee. And so we feel like for those opportunities and when those commercial businesses want to use city facilities, that they should have to pay an additional rate in order to generate profit or revenue off of it. And as I mentioned before, 80 of our other, 80% of our other competitors in the Willamette Valley also use the same model. So, and then option B, if you want to scroll down a little bit more, shows what the rates would look like if we just switched for both our park rentals as well as senior center rentals to just a resident and a non-residency. That's kind of the quick version of it. I'm more than happy to answer any additional questions that you have.
And any questions staff have? And let's see, Dick's video went out, I don't see Dick. Okay, Rich, I see Rich, yeah, Rich?
I object to the commercial, and it's really pretty simple. Most business is 10 employees or less. Most business fails in the first six months. Most business doesn't make as much money as you do. I mean, half as much money as you do. If I think I know about how much you make. Most business doesn't make a profit at all in the first year. Now, the way I went into business was I was in a job and the federal government decided they wanted to have a luxury tax on boats. And we went from having eight boats on the ways to one in three weeks. They just walked away from them. So we didn't need people anymore. And that was at the point that I went into business. Most, well, right now, if Counselor Johnson II wants to have a place there when he first starts business, he has to pay more than he does as an individual. So what we're doing is we're discriminating against people based on how they earn their living. It's no different than whether or not you earn your living by working for somebody else. If you do the exact same thing, like as an electrician, people, gee, their business went out of business, so now they have to find something. That's what could have happened to Counselor Coburn when his father sold the business. It isn't what happened, but it could have. That's why I object to it, because it's basically discrimination. And I'm not going to vote for anything that has a discriminatory tax on or a discriminatory fee against people just trying to earn a living. Doesn't make any difference how big they are.
Okay, Bill?
I thought after our discussion a couple of weeks ago, that Kim, that you were going to come back with just a resident, non-resident price structure.
And so that's why I did provide an option B, but I just wanted to do my due diligence. And based on what is standard in our industry and kind of giving some additional context, because I feel like maybe I didn't do the best job in doing that last time around and saying specifically what I mean when I mean commercial or nonprofit. So I figured I might as well just throw it out there and see if that provides any additional context to help the council have a well-rounded picture as they make their decision. So is there?
Well, I agree with Rich, a local resident pays taxes and a local business pays taxes. An out-of-town person doesn't pay local taxes and an out-of-town business doesn't pay local taxes. I mean, that's a general statement, there's always exceptions. So I'm comfortable that a resident, non-resident kind of accomplishes what it is that we're trying to do. Give the residents or the people, the people and businesses here that pay taxes and support Albany.
So Kim, will there be a criteria for that commercial rate? So, I mean, we don't want to have a business try to book daily or weekly space that's going to end up eliminating it from other nonprofits or residents from using the space. Is there going to be, I'd say, a criteria that they can only use it for so many times out of a year? And then that way, they're not, instead of paying for brick and mortar building, we don't want them using our senior center space for their business when that's not fair to all other businesses.
And we can definitely go back and take a look at that. At this point, priority goes to internal programs first and then partner programs. And so we would be able to move forward and maybe make a cap of X amount of times over a year, they would be able to rent a space for similar activity. And that could be across the board regardless of what type of business.
Yeah, that would be needed, yeah. So we only have one senior center, oh, so yeah. Counsel, other questions? Dick, I still don't see you, so do you have anything to say?
No.
Okay, counsel, have anything else that you want, because this will be on Wednesday night's agenda? Any other changes you'd like to see? Or you want it brought forward as is?
I'd like to have it brought forward as B. It's the two, resident, non-resident.
I agree with that.
Yeah, I would too, and I'd say, you know, let's give it a try and see how it works.
Okay, so you're wanting it without the commercial?
Without the commercial. You know, I have no heartburn, if somebody wants to, you know, every other week they want to rent the place, yeah, well, that's something different. But let's understand, if you're renting it once or twice a year for a special occasion, you know, that fits in with everybody else.
Okay, would you like to make a motion to make that clear for staff then? Unless that comes up, I want to eliminate the commercial component. So how about, I'm not seeing the thumbs, so how about a motion? To just bring?
I move to use group B, resident, non-resident.
I'll second that.
Okay, and any more discussion? All those in favor saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Okay, all right, so is that all you need then, Kim?
That's all I need.
Anything else on this item? Okay.
Where's that?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And then the whole resolution will be on Wednesday night, counsel. Okay, the next item would be our projected budget impacts. Is there any other budget committee members that had logged on? Because I had down, there was Colleen, Terry, and Sue. I think I saw a picture with Bob Brown on from the library board. I think I might have seen him too, so.
Isn't Will Summers, is it Will Summers a budget committee individual?
Do you see him on there?
I see his name as an attendee.
Yeah, Will's my appointee to the budget committee.
Yeah, and he's on here according to what I see.
Yeah, he's there, I saw his face earlier.
It's the bottom. And I'm just have like initials, so I think we've got everyone then. Okay, all right, Peter, it's all yours.
Thank you, Mayor, good afternoon. It's a pretty warm afternoon. First of all, I'll point out that this is not a budget committee meeting. But greetings to those of our budget committee members who are attending. And welcome to any members of the public who are interested in hearing about future impacts on city services. These virtual meetings that we're doing are a very different format than what we're used to. And they're less than ideal for important and complex subjects. We're adapting and we're getting better at using these tools, but it's still not the preferred format. Now, the context of a discussion or presentation is almost always as important as a presentation itself. So before I start in on the actual presentation of a forecast of impacts, let me try to provide some context. We are just past the midway point of our budget period. If you'll recall, one year ago in July of 2019, you had just adopted the city's first biennial budget. In the budget committee meetings and council meetings that preceded the budget adoption, we had noted the rising costs of government and the fact that revenue was not rising at the same rate. These cost drivers were forcing us to conduct reviews of program budgets. There were no large-scale reductions to services and staffing as part of that budget. At council's request, following adoption of the biennial budget for fiscal years 20 and 21, which gave a little bit of breathing room, began to study a long list of revenue enhancements and cost containment measures. And over the course of several council meetings, the list was slowly winnowed down to a potential utility fee. The council's general sense at that point was that they wanted a review of the negative impacts on the city's services before they made any decision to pursue a utility fee. That review was to come back in May after we had had a chance to incorporate the results of the public safety lift. Along the way came a pandemic. And a crisis for city services funded by transient lodging taxes, as well as a crisis for all parks and recreation programming and revenue. Budget forecasting is difficult and complicated. Just the fact that we're doing it places significant stress on the city's workforce and on its leadership and governing body. Those who are in the thick of it know, they know that their work will be second-guessed and questioned. And those who are simply aware of its existence can't help wondering what it means for their future. Our longstanding practice has been to forecast conservatively. The city's fiscal policy rightly, I believe, mandates that we forecast conservatively. This helps to keep a cushion, which in turn helps to avoid shortfalls at budget time. On the other hand, it also means by definition that negative impacts will be overestimated. As we get closer and closer to the biennium for which we're planning, the margin of error should get smaller, barring any unforeseen catastrophes. On the screen in front of you, you see what I dealt with quite a few times in the Gulf Coast, and that was a hurricane map. So I would liken budget forecasting to the idea of where do you think that hurricane is going to go? And today, when we look five, six days out, that cone is very big. So similarly, the longer the time period being predicted, the greater the potential error. And to avoid the possibility of ending up in negative territory, we aim to estimate conservatively. This conservative approach should mean that as the picture becomes clearer, as we go further down the road, the picture would get slightly better. But we can't count on that. We have to approach this cautiously and plan for the worst-case scenario. As we discussed last year, and indeed as we've discussed for the three years that I've been here, the costs of providing all aspects of government service are on the rise, they continue to rise. Revenues are increasing at a much slower rate, causing a widening gulf. Our forecasting now is being pursued at a time when some important data are not yet readily available. PERS rates, the second biggest driver in personnel costs, will be established by the actuary. Employer paid insurance costs for employees, our third biggest driver in personnel costs, are not yet completely clear. And the latest property tax revenues with and without COVID effects won't be available until November. Long-term COVID planning in general is unclear, the governor's orders on gatherings, on schooling, which affects our workforce, et cetera. The margins of error are significant, and they correlate to forecasting significant impacts on service delivery. Everyone recognizes that COVID-19 has certainly had an enormous impact on the world. The economy has entered a recession defined by two quarters of negative growth. And hopes for a quick, or at least a steady recovery, are now being dashed by fears of a second wave or fears that the first wave is not complete. Revenue streams immediately ceased for many businesses and for some city programs. And the general economic impact of reduced spending, growth, and potentially of property values will linger for months, if not years, to come. The city is not immune. Prior to the current pandemic, the economy was strong, and for many, the days of the Great Recession had faded into the past. However, the impacts of the Great Recession are still being felt. As you've heard in the past, many of our departments that made cuts during the recession never came back to pre-recession staffing levels. Meanwhile, the city has continued to grow, and this point is extremely important to understand. The Great Recession posed significant financial challenges for everyone. Like many businesses and private citizens, Albany implemented efficiencies, reduced FTE, or full-time equivalent, and reduced services. For those of you who worked through those challenges, you know those decisions were not easy. But when reductions were made, they were done with the goal of minimizing the impact on the community. Such an exercise was repeated during the last budget as we faced an imbalance between growth and revenue and expenses. As we look to address future budget challenges, we'll be doing the same thing. But inevitably, services will have to be cut. Your management team started budget impact discussions many months ago with preliminary estimates, and then the pandemic struck. The economic impacts of the pandemic were severe on programs funded through TLT. The impacts on parks and recreation have also been severe. And yet, we don't yet know what the full impact is going to be. What we do know is that the pandemic has made an already serious situation even worse. So we started to take steps to try to brace for the impact. A hiring chill was implemented last year and is still in effect. Many positions are not being filled. You remember Marilyn Smith who just retired, her position hasn't been filled and we don't plan to do that. Rob Romancier, who managed our pool, and several other staff in fire, life safety, and GIS, and others. They've come open, they're left open in order to avoid the inevitability of layoffs. We've chosen not to fill the positions, knowing these constraints were imminent. Unfortunately, some departments have had to underfund their equipment replacement accounts in order to avoid layoffs, which is an unsustainable practice, and really it's against desired practice. At the same time, demands for service are going up. The city continues to grow, and state and federal policymakers continue to add to the list of compliance requirements, the unfunded mandates that you often hear of. The leadership team completed their budgetary impact assessments on Wednesday of last week. And tonight, I intend to provide a consolidated view of the substantial impacts we're facing. With the funding levels we're anticipating, substantial reductions in services and programs across the city will be necessary. Staff continue to implement cost-saving measures, and they continue to implement efficiencies with the intent of preserving as many services as possible. But despite these efforts, the service reductions that these cuts represent would have meaningful community impacts, and we'll go over those impacts. This next slide that Jorge has put up, to help me make a point to you, and that is that as we go over these impacts, I want you to think of them not only in terms of service level reductions, but also in terms of opportunity costs and risk. And that risk is associated with compliance, the ability to comply with mandates that are put on us by the state and federal government, and workforce risk, the risk of losing very qualified people, the risk of not being able to retain people, not being able to recruit people, and the risk of losing professionalism among staff. Overall, then, if you go to the next slide, Jorge, here's a graph that provides the big picture of the general fund, the Parks and Recreation Fund and Central Services Funds. Be reminded that we're talking tonight only about the general fund, which is 33% of our current biennial budget of $364 million. But other funds in transit and streets, et cetera, are facing similar pressures and may be in the same condition and outlook as we look at them. The city's services are intertwined. They all support each other and they all depend on each other. And I'm going to talk about these impacts in reference to our strategic plan tonight. The council has four primary themes that reflect the city's mission and vision statements. Great neighborhoods, a safe city, a healthy economy, and an effective government. The strategic plan lays out specific goals, objectives, and actions that move the organization toward a vision of the future. But of course, these actions have to be resourced. Now, if you look at the charts that Jorge is showing you, with a shortfall of approximately $5.5 million in the general fund, workforce adjustments of approximately 30 FTE would have to be made to general fund, parks and recreation, and central services. And those central services are the city manager's office, the IT staff, finance, and HR. The central services fund was included in this exercise, as the general fund departments are approximately 46% of its clientele. So that slide that you see up there in front of you shows, if you look at the bottom at the yellow line there, shows a deficit of $5.4 million projected for the start of, or the end of '21 to '23. And the reason that the next year is $14 million is because that $5 million is carried over into the beginning balance for the next biennium, and so on, and so on. So you can see that this is really a theoretical table, we would never go negative like that. But what it shows you is that it's not sustainable to carry on with our current service levels. Okay, any questions on that? If not, we'll go on to the next slide, Jorge. So great neighborhoods, sadly, reductions of service on the scale that we're contemplating can't help but impact our community's health, safety, and wellness opportunities. We'll continue to be innovative and find ways to serve our citizens, but the loss of 7% of FTE on top of losses sustained in previous years will inevitably affect the quality of life in our neighborhoods. And next slide, Jorge. To the great neighborhoods slide. About 10 of the FTE are associated directly with quality of life in our neighborhoods, and will have effects such as the loss of the adult sports program. Other programs that serve youth and older community members were evaluated as higher priorities. Elimination of One River Rhythms concert annually. Elimination of two Fun in the Park events annually. The potential elimination of one Summer Sounds concert, and the reduced evening entertainment at the Northwest Art and Air Festival. Reduced citywide beautification efforts. These include seasonal plantings around the city. And Monteith, Grand Prairie, Waverly, Cuplets, et cetera. Some grassy areas will need to be transformed to mulch along roadways. City Hall, sadly, we'll have to forego the beautiful horticulture that decorates City Hall, and potentially reduce irrigation of parks by 30%. It'll also mean a significant increase in the maintenance backlog for parks. Staff who used to number 32 in 2008 are down to 21 now and will be further impacted. It also means a virtual elimination of our code enforcement program, making us much more reactive than proactive, which would lead to community frustration from a lack of response to code violations, abandoned vehicles, et cetera, all of which need to lead to a significant negative impact on quality of life. We won't have the capacity to deal with derelict structures and nuisance properties, and we'll lose our current expertise in code compliance and our ability to review and improve ordinances to stay ahead of code enforcement problems. Sadly, we'll see a decrease in our ability to conduct homeless outreach response, and a further reduction in our planning capacity, which is already well understaffed, which is, and it's an important component of the services needed by our community, will bring reduced public will bring reduced public service, increased review times, and delays in responding to customers. We'll see an increase in the backlog of inefficiencies in our internal processes, which we can recognize that we just at times have, do not have the staff to dedicate to changing some of those code problems. As you know, these problems create barriers, and they increase costs for the development community and the city. But we currently have enough staff only to address a fraction of those issues. And these shortcomings lead to increased risk of the city being regarded as slow and unfriendly to development. Longer review times for applications and responses to public inquiry, and the risk of mistakes sadly goes up as pressure is increased on the remaining people who who process applications and responses. A reduction in hours open to the public with the libraries, and a reduction in days that the municipal court is open. A reduction in library programs, and less opportunities for teens to access safe indoor space. Funding for library materials was eliminated in the second year of the biennium and won't return in the next biennium. Next slide, Jorge. So great neighborhoods help to create a safe city, and a safe city helps to promote great neighborhoods. Again, they're intertwined, city programs are synergistic, and they support each other. With a projected loss of sixteen FTE, where in this area, we expect to encounter a degradation of our response to mandatory state reporting, an increased risk due to loss of command presence on a patrol night shift, and a significant reduction in community outreach across all departments. There may be a reduced perception of safety in schools due to the loss of SROs, as well as a reduced ability to build positive relationships between APD and students. Potentially, an increase in crashes and other traffic incidents as a lack of police presence reduces deterrent effects and allows an increase in risky driving behavior, and a reduction in our ability to respond to animal control issues. Our ability to provide traffic control and traffic collisions or power outages will be hampered. And from a policing perspective, perhaps the most significant impacts are the move from a proactive policing stance, which allows us to take a deterrent approach, engaging the public to learn their concerns and preventing crimes, to a reactionary policing stance, responding to calls. That's the first most significant impact. The second is the risk to our police department's accreditation. Much of the progress we've accomplished in the past several years will be at risk. From a fire and EMS perspective, annual calls for service increase steadily as the city grows, now at ten thousand, as you've seen before. And twenty percent of the time, there are three or more calls occurring at the same time, demonstrating the importance of staffing those five stations we have to respond. Impacts fall most heavily on training, negatively affecting our ability to ensure emergency personnel are being trained to meet safety standards and state requirements. But a reduced fire marshal ability to inspect businesses will in turn raise the risk of fires and safety incidents. Our ambulance at our North Albany Fire Station allows dual-role paramedic firefighters to remain available for emergencies within the city of Albany, and the proposed reductions will eliminate the single-role program and remove the ambulance from our response matrix. There's a risk of increased response times to medical and fire emergencies, and there's a potential effect on our insurance service office or ISO credit for fire and life safety program and increased insurance rates for citizens. And that's just a potential, but it's there. A reduction in the number of hours that firefighters are trained would potentially impact their ability to stay current and compliant with state firefighter training recommendations, and there would be a decreased, decrease in interactions with commercial and industry stakeholders and partners. Many of the expenditures in the municipal court are nondiscretionary, and I would cite public defender fees, jail fees, city attorney costs, county assessments, et cetera, which lead to very few places to make reductions. The municipal court will have to cut training, and then also cut to FTE. This, the potential here is reduced service levels and an inability to maintain past due accounts. We anticipate a significant decrease in the amount of total payments collected, and the need to close court perhaps for two days a week. But certainly for one. Okay, Jorge has moved on to his next slide, which is a healthy economy. It's difficult to find any bright spots in any of this, but due to CARES Act funding that we've received for transit, there is no shortfall in transit. The Transit Fund, the Albany Transit System, the Lynn Benton Loop, and Paratransit rely on a complex mix of funds from local, state, and federal sources, many of which have local match requirements. Local match must come from non-federal funds and cannot come from fair revenue. The two main programs, ATS and the Loop, are in the early stages of implementing service improvement plans, which will add capacity and extend operating hours for both services. Because paratransit operations are tied by law to Albany Transit System fixed route service, paratransit operations will also increase slightly. Service expansion and improvements are primarily funded through state transportation improvement funds, as well as partnership amounts from Loop Partners, including Corvallis Transit, OSU, and LBCC. Albany Transit Programs will also be receiving two point six million dollars in federal CARES funding over the next biennium. For these reasons, transit funding at the moment is stable and is able to support an expansion of service that will improve transportation options to the city and to the region. As you've recently seen demonstrated in the city's response to the drastic drop in TLT revenues, the future of our Economic Development Program capability is tied to transient lodging tax dollars and separate from the General Fund. But planning, as one of our development services, is essential to the health of an economy, and we've already discussed the impacts on this service that are associated with the looming shortfall. Our planning capacity, already lower than that required to provide needed services, will be unable to avoid increased review times, and these problems create barriers and increase costs for private sector development. I think Jorge, you're on the next slide, effective government. We do believe, I believe, we all believe that the city is a service organization. We don't manufacture anything, except perhaps water. But we provide many different services. And in doing so, an effective government requires services that support its frontline service providers. Those employees and the functions they perform need support in strategic planning, training and education, legal services, information technology, risk management, procurement, payroll, et cetera. Efforts to eliminate duplication and pursue flexible, paperless options wherever possible to keep the cost of materials and supplies down are always being evaluated. But nondiscretionary citywide expenditures limit where reductions can be made. For example, munis licensing fees, bank fees, audit costs, Microsoft Office three sixty-five licensing, laser fiche, cybersecurity, server storage, software and hardware, records archiving, and so on, and so on. However, support services will also see a reduction of six and a half FTE, as well as a reduction of support for training and a reduction in materials and supplies in order to help us meet budget constraints. The impacts are considerable. Reduced service and increased turnaround times in the IT help desk, in recruiting, training, compliance, procurement, budget assistance to all departments, as well as the inability to maintain certain programs. Reductions in training are of special concern. New laws seem to come out with frustrating frequency, and complying with them is imperative. A lack of education and training will reduce the ability to respond proactively to changing laws and HR practices. This will be detrimental to the city as a whole. Formal training is necessary to update policy and to comply with the city's legal requirements. Staff already limit the number of professional development trainings, meetings, and conferences they attend, and further cuts in continuing professional education, meetings, and conferences are an indicator, a warning of significant risk. Reduced leadership and supervisor training programs that benefit the entire organization will also have an impact. With a significant reduction in staff, our ability to provide a GFOA budget document and a GFOA popular annual financial report will disappear. But what I'm most worried about is the long-term impact on our bond rating if our ability to create a CAFR is eliminated. As we prioritize, but have fewer resources with which to accomplish tasks, projects that hang out on the back burner will be pushed further back. Losing personnel will result in an increasing backlog. Although some overtime is expected, the amount of additional work will lead to a work-life imbalance and quite possibly to the loss of staff. It also, there's potentially increased risk in cybersecurity breaches. I worry that the degradation, that degradation will severely test our ability to effectively address these emerging challenges. With, as I mentioned before, with the June thirty retirement of Marilyn Smith, core functions of her position were distributed among staff and other departments. Police have taken a bigger role in managing code enforcement team functions. Community development represents the city on boards for heart and the emergency food and shelter program. And other duties were automated or eliminated to ensure the staff's success in taking over critical functions. With the voluntary resignation of our admin assistant, we left the position unfilled for the foreseeable future. Department directors and program managers who were supported by this position had to take a look at their needs and provide input with respect to what was mission critical. So the long-term impacts of cutting positions may not be known for some time. Although every department and individual employee who relied on them for support have felt the immediate impact of reduced staff. Fewer FTE means reduced service levels to all departments, the city council, and the community at large. And some programs or activities may need to be cut in the future to take up new initiatives identified by the council. Overall, there'll be a severely inhibited ability to pursue community engagement programs and activities as departments focus on core missions. Community engagement programs provide outreach and engagement opportunities for all residents, regardless of their socioeconomic status and the language spoken or any other factors. We won't have funds to identify, we won't have funds identified to pursue such programs despite the fact that they're important to you as a council and to me as a city manager. And some of these programs include the Adult and Youth Citizens Academy, the Cadet Program, social media presence, which will have to also be decreased, assistance to seniors, volunteer programs, and neighborhood watch programs. Across the city, reduced contributions to equipment replacement will lead to extended service life for existing equipment, and will place the burden on future budgets. There's also the risk that more emergency purchases will be necessary as opposed to proactive purchases that keep equipment operational within preferred service lives. Across the city, also, a reduction in continuing professional education, meetings, and conferences poses a lot, the risk of a loss of professionalism. And across the city, staffs will have to change from a proactive to a reactive stance. The leadership team and I will have to anticipate work-life issues that will result from reductions of this magnitude. We will diligently continue evaluating and refining priorities. One big concern is the fact that staff want to provide the best in service. Without the tools and the staff required to fulfill their roles and responsibilities, the staff who remain trying to do as much as they can will bear much of the impact of a, perhaps a deteriorating image, which will inevitably lead to a morale issue. Staff take great pride in their work, and they want to make improvements and provide high-quality service. It would be reasonable to expect that some of our staff will move on to other more promising opportunities, and losing experienced and dedicated staff is another risk with high-cost consequences. You've heard the term risk here quite often. And much of what we provide is protection against things that might happen. A higher level of risk is often what we incur if we can't afford a certain level of protection. It doesn't necessarily mean that the consequences will happen, but it does mean that the probability goes up, and we need to be conscious of accepting that risk. What I've provided you tonight sounds like a lot, and it is a lot, but we have to come to grips with it. If you'll recall the forecasting spreadsheet we showed you earlier, and Jorge, perhaps you could put that up again. As we look to the out years, I have to note that under the current trajectory, additional cuts will be necessary. This will inevitably result in further FTE reductions. In some of our functions, this could threaten base levels of service, such as keeping a fire station open, keeping the Carnegie Library open, or the Senior Center open. We need to remind you that the impacts of the pandemic on our budget are not yet quantifiable. As we just reviewed, we already face significant challenges, and further strain on our revenue streams will only make it worse. Unfortunately, COVID nineteen dealt an additional and severe blow. This was felt immediately in our Parks and Recreation Program and will be felt for the next few years. Programs and facilities that have traditionally generated substantial revenue were closed or modified, adding to the problem for the next biennium. The team in Parks and Rec have adapted as best they can and provided virtual, non-traditional programming, but those efforts don't fill the gap. Spending across the department has been drastically decreased in order to slow the damage. In fiscal year twenty-one, revenues for programs are estimated at fifty percent of their expected budget levels and are projected to take years to recover. Revenues attached to programs with heavy restrictions or to facilities that remain closed dropped to zero to twenty-five percent over the next year. Barring any alternative sources of revenue, this will result in the need to make FTE changes in FY twenty-one over and above what had already been expected. As we move closer to budget preparation, we'll have a better understanding of our true revenue and expenditure pictures. COVID nineteen impacts may not yet be fully understood, but we should know more than we do today. For perspective, every five percent reduction in property tax revenue represents one point three million dollars. And I'm trying to get to the slide here that Jorge has up for you. So based on average employee costs, wages, and benefits, this represents eight point six seven public safety employees or thirteen general service employees. Some Oregon communities are using estimates as low as negative five percent. In other words, a five percent reduction in annual property tax revenue due to COVID nineteen. What, what we can say with certainty is what you see on the graph in front of you, that the city of Albany experienced a one point six percent drop in property tax revenue in the last recession. If no action is taken to secure additional revenues, the Budget Committee should anticipate these significant reductions in FTE in service. And a word on that slide, the, the two slides indicate, or the one on the right just indicates a snapshot of that orange line that you see in the middle on the left. So the distribution of those reductions may also be impacted by COVID nineteen due to the force of the initial impact on departments like Parks and Recreation. All of us are very grateful for the recent passage of the Public Safety Levy, as it's become a part of base funding. Without its passage, we would have been in a much worse state. Though it has historically passed with strong margins, it's never guaranteed. Because it's a local option levy, which must be renewed every five years, approximately ten percent of our general fund budget is at risk every five years. As council considered alternatives last year for containing costs and increasing revenues, you narrowed down the options to a utility fee. I'm very aware of the hardships that so many of our citizens are facing, and your responsibility to them, our responsibility to them is to help them, not to make things worse. So a Parks and Library utility fee or a livability utility fee, which maintains some of the services our city values, has to be considered in that context. Many other Oregon communities through their councils have made similar decisions to address similar shortfalls. They are attracted not only by the fact that certain services will be able to continue, but also by the fact that a utility fee provides the council with a more stable and predictable source of funding, along with direct oversight and control of rates. Even however, with a utility fee implemented, it's highly likely that service level cuts will be necessary and that higher levels of risk will have to be accepted. And those are the three pieces of the puzzle that you see in front of you. So at this point, that's the end of prepared remarks that I have for you. And I would be happy to answer any questions. J.C. Rowley, our acting finance director is on board and here with us. And we'd be happy to hear your questions.
Okay, council? Anybody have any questions for Peter? I just say it's, it is very disheartening to see those numbers. It's just quite ugly. That's about how it spells it out. It's just ugly. And so it's kind of like we're entering a a really ugly crossroad right now. It's either we're stay straight forward on that road and seek out new revenues, or if we take another road, it's going to be, you know, we're going to have our livability impacted. So there's just kind of only a few choices there, but the numbers are just very, very ugly. But I was curious to see if you have had, if you broke down the increases for each, on the deficit of general fund, how much of it is the PERS and how much is it insurance cost? And there's the property tax revenue that is, you know, we won't know till November, but between the two big, so my understanding is PERS wasn't as high as what we thought it was. It was going to be more of the insurance cost that was going to be impacting us more. But have you had those numbers broke down?
And I would say that also that wages themselves are huge and driving, driving costs up. Now, I have to take a moment to recognize J.C. for putting together this forecasting tool which we've been using. And he, to see him run through an Excel spreadsheet is like watching art in action. He's, he's amazing at it. So he, he can address probably every cell of that spreadsheet by heart. Maybe that's a slight exaggeration, J.C. But he would be the one to be able to tell you what assumptions we used in building those increases.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, J.C.?
Well, we looked at a bunch of different things, as well as reached outside of the city and looked at some of our experts around the state. So Carol Samuels, who is a conservative PERS expert, she forwarded us information on what to expect for our next PERS rate, which actually came from an actuarial report that she was able to give us guidance on what our next biennium may look like. However, we don't know what the actual actuarial rate will be, which takes into account the market and how much money their actual PERS account is making. We won't know that until, I believe they say until quarter two of this fiscal year. And so we won't know between sometime October and December of this year, what our PERS rates for the next biennium will be. However, we've, based on the reports that we do have, we're looking at potentially each individual person costing about 36% in PERS. So when you just talk about wages in general, it's a, it's quite a big of a percentage when you're just talking about $1.36 on top of that needs to be paid to PERS.
Wow. So Mike then, Bessie?
Thanks, Peter, for the presentation. I got a couple of things that came to mind. One of them may not be very popular, but we do a lot of work in a lot of different municipalities across the, across the state. And one of the, one of the things that we encounter is a business license. And that business license can be anywhere from $100 to $200 for a year. And you have to have that before you can get a permit to do any kind of construction work. Bill's probably run into that in his, in his travels. You have a business license. And it's just, just a matter of fact, every business has it. And I know it may not be popular with a lot of people, but I think that's one way that could, we could generate some, some, some funds. The other thing that I ran into this last couple of weeks is what I find out, found out. Contractors are required by law to get a permit from the jurisdiction having authority. And what I found out, there's a lot of construction companies and individuals that have businesses that are not pulling the required permits to do the work that they're, they're doing. And what I found out, what made it, tied this all together is, I asked, well, what is the fine for somebody not getting a permit after our staff goes through all of the, the investigation and spends their time to find that out, and I find out there is no fine. It's just you have to get a permit. In some of my research that I've done on different companies that have been in business for many, many, many years, maybe only have 100 permits in the last 30 years in the city of Albany, where I know that that's not correct. So I'm saying if they're not getting, number one, a business license, number two, and if they're not getting permits, when they're caught, they get fined $500. $250 because that revenue, we're being, we're being stolen from when people don't get the proper permits. And the other thing, I get a lot, I'm sorry. Years ago, there used to be a lot of volunteer firefighters here in Albany. At any one call, there could be anywhere from 30, 20 to 30 added people at, at the scene. Why can't we go back to, I know what I'm going to hear is because they don't have training. I know I'm, I know I'm going to hear this. But police and fire could do with volunteers. I mean, there's most people can drive cars or, or carry water bottles or lack of roll hose or, or stand street guard or whatever else to augmentate so that our trained folks have the ability to respond and do other things while volunteer people can take up the slack. So I've said a lot of things. That's what I got.
Thank you.
Bessie? Rich, did you have your pencil?
I did.
Okay, so Bessie then, Rich.
Yep. Mayor, this is Bessie. I'm going to pass for right now. I've been thinking on some of the things that Mike is saying, so I'll just pass to Rich. Thanks.
All right. Thank you. Rich?
I had a couple of things. One, notice when you're talking about what we're going to lose out of utilities, central service charges, that they are not going to get the service if the central service charges do not, or if we don't have the people there to give them a service. And I'm wondering, does that mean that they're not going to pay central service charges to the same extent? If they're not going to get the services, if we're going to chop off some of the people there? And if that is, is in fact true, can they? Because, I know, there may be a law against using the funds because we're not using them the way, you know, for the for sewer or water, whatever. Is there a concern there?
Well, I would, I would defer to J.C., but I would say at first blush that, you know, our H, if you use our HR staff as an example, they provide service to all other departments. And there's a certain base level of service that has to be provided. So central service charges couldn't go any lower than what's caught, what, what's charged to provide that base level. Their, their, their performance would suffer though. And recruiting would be slower and there'd probably be a lot of other areas in which that reduced performance would be evident. J.C., you want to comment?
Yeah, so I was just going to add to kind of where Peter's going and why there is the connection. And Rich, yes, you did touch on that. If we were to eliminate some of these positions in our costs and central services, that would be a cost savings potentially in some of these other departments, which is where the connection with kind of the circular reference there. But what it does do is it pushes some of that work from HR, from finance, out to those departments who maybe don't specialize in that. And so then they would have to pick up potentially part of that workload as well to do their own accounting, their own HR kind of work that HR wouldn't be able to do for them.
Okay. And thank you. And the second thing I had as a moment, I know a lot about welding. And Mike knows a lot about heating and air conditioning. And Bill knows a lot about electrical. We, doesn't mean we know a lot about what happens internally at the worker bee level of our, of our staff. And I guess I would like to see us encourage not just from supervisors down to them, but also from a city council, down the entire staff to encourage them to come up with ways that we can either not have to do something to save us money. Maybe there's an old archaic rule that we have that, that nobody else has thought of, that doesn't do us a whole lot of good, that they have to deal with every day that others don't, that they might know about. I mean, there are things like I have had a customer that was welding crucibles together the same way they did it in 1956. Because, well, gee, we've always done it that way. That doesn't save any money. There's a way to do that, and they would know that better than us. So I guess I would ask that they be encouraged to come up with ways that they may be able to tell us that we may not know about to make the, the system more efficient instead of having to lay somebody off or cut back service if we could do something a little differently. That's all I have right now.
Peter, did you respond or before Mike would be next?
Thank you. I, I've got, I'm taking notes on what councilors have provided for input.
Okay, Mike?
Years ago, we had in, in the Marine Corps what's called Benny SUGS. And what that was, was beneficial suggestions. And those would be put forth to a committee. And the person that put home, put forth the beneficial suggestion for the good of the order or the good of the team, that thing was analyzed and we'd look at it and then J.C. would look at, well, that suggestion just saved us $10,000 a year. So that individual would get a reward of maybe $1,000 or $500 for putting in that suggestion to move it forward. And then somebody takes a look at it and said, well, we never thought of that, but it's going to save us a, a ton of money. So you give some of that savings to the person that did the, what we call the Benny SUG.
I like that, Mike.
Okay, Bessie?
Okay. I want to say Mike's suggestion about the business license. When I first moved here in 88, I was shocked that there was no business license. I know it's not popular, but it, you know, it was just something that everywhere I'd been, there's, there is a business license, you know, not, it's not real big, but at least it's, it also gives you an idea of the businesses you have in town and if you want to communicate with them and stuff like that. So I, I think we should keep that on the table. And one other thing that, I don't know if it would save or if it's in the plan, but closing City Hall one, you know, on a Friday, may be an option, you know. I've always said, when I refer the county, I always said when we were going through budget cuts and stuff, it's always the employees who, you know, take the brunt, but the public never feels it. And so if they don't feel it, they think, well, that's okay, then apparently you didn't need the people in the first place. And so, you know, you're doing, you know, the least effective it has on people, you know, the, you know, the better. But I think at this point, the way Peter's saying what we're going through, we've got a lot of, a lot of things to think about. And, and I'll bring this up now, is that this is the perfect time to repurpose the Carnegie Library. And I know it's going to, it's going to come with, you know, objections and stuff. But if we can utilize it in a different way, now's a perfect time to do it. And if people say, well, then I won't be able to walk to the library. Well, I can't walk to the library. So there's a, you know, we all have to sacrifice. And I think that's one that we could do right now with it being closed is probably the easiest time that we could do it. So that's all I have right now. I'll keep thinking. Thank you.
And I, and also with the business license, that was, has been brought up over the years. And one time we were just about ready to be able to have the, the vote. I think there was an ordinance on it. We had a lot of pushback on that one, so it did not go anywhere. And then I think it was on the table before, council, if you wanted to pursue that in, in the recent, you know, recent years, but that we did not bring forward. I don't know how much, I can't remember how much that would have potentially generated. Peter, do you remember on that?
I'd want to take the opportunity to say that a business registration would be a very valuable thing to have. I, I don't look at it as a revenue opportunity. I look at it more, you remember the difficulties Seth had, Seth and Sophie had in finding businesses in the city to work with to give them assistance during the pandemic? If we had a business registration, that would have been a heck of a lot easier. Also, a business registration requires that businesses come into the, the desk upstairs in community development and helps them to make sure that they go through all the things that they need to go through so that they don't find out two months into the process that they've missed something and spent money that they shouldn't have spent money on. So there are multiple benefits to a registration, a business registration. And, but again, I would stay away from the idea that it's for, it's a significant contribution to revenues because I think you'd want to keep it at a fairly reasonable rate if you want to have any chance of having that be adopted.
Right. Other questions? Alex?
So I've been listening to this conversation and I'm looking at the slides. I would, I would have liked more time to actually look at the slides and, and talk with my, my counterparts, talk over here and Peter about them. And I kind of feel like I need more time to go over them. And I know it looks bleak. But I think the registered registration is a great idea. It will help mitigate issues later when we, we have an actual list of businesses. I know I pay every year $100 registering my business with the state of Oregon. And I was surprised that we didn't actually have one here in Albany as well. That's interesting to me. How are we doing as far as, as far as, have we frozen pay raises? Or what's going on with the outgoing, currently obligated payout? Have we frozen pay raises and things like that?
We have not frozen pay raises. A number of people have voluntarily declined pay raises. But haven't been frozen. There are union contracts that we have to adhere to. So no, they haven't. Now, in bargaining in the, in the future, we may be, you know, forced to ask for concessions. But that's something that we haven't yet broached. And you have, you know, you, this, this presentation to you tonight is meant to, to give you some context. And if it raises questions in your mind, that's the actual, the intended effect. And please, by all means, ask them now or, or send me an email or, you know, call me up and I'll be happy to answer them, as will J.C. So there, there are ideas that are popping up. But again, I want to point out that we did go through this exercise. We did talk about closing City Hall one day a week and you decided not to do that. We did talk about a host of other revenue enhancement things, such as an engine defense fee, which we implemented at your, with your approval. A, a host of other revenue enhancement things such as an engine defense fee, which we implemented at your, with your approval. Uh, uh, equalizing franchise fees across all of our franchises. Um, so there's a lot of things that have been done, fire med fees. So, um. It's just not going to be enough to bridge the gap. And what you arrived at last year was. Somewhat of a, you know, a, a acknowledgement that you need a utility fee. But there was a difference of opinion about whether it should be implemented under the council's authority or sent to the voters for their approval. So, uh, that's where we have been carrying this on. And, and really. When you look at, I, I wish I had the, um. The graph for the future, which shows that we're going to have to make, we're going to have to continue to make adjustments. And when I'm, I'm, I'm just, I, I hate to say this, but a reduction in services is, is inevitable.
Yeah. I understand that. I just, you know, I, I saw the slides the first time. I know we discussed it, but. You know, seeing the slides and having to give direction after watching, looking at them for five or 10 minutes is a lot different than having a whole, a whole day in.
No, Alex, I don't, we don't expect any direction from you at this point. I know this is a lot to digest. It's a lot of information. Um, and I'm sure we'll be talking about it quite a bit more.
Mike?
Thank you. Um, Peter or whoever can answer this question. If we decide to do something with utility fee and, and the council decides to send it to the voters, do we have time to do that before the? General election in November?
Should have.
I. It would be a, it would be a lot of pressure. Let me, let me get back to you on that.
I'd like to know the timeline on that.
August, September, October, November?
Yeah.
Four months, yeah.
That would be pretty tight on that one. So yeah, I don't know.
I'd like to, I just, I'd just like to know if we could do it or not.
Yeah. Counsel, any other questions? Dick, do you have anything? I said no.
Uh, Rich, Rich got a question.
Oh, Rich?
Yeah, if we're. If we're intent upon making that, this fee, and there is a question whether or not we could get it done by November. The quicker we do this, the better off we are. Now, personally, I'm not. I'm not in favor of implementing one by ourselves. I think that's. That's not right. I know others, some others feel that way too. But, you know, if this, I'm fine with it if, if we send it to the voters because, well, they're the boss. And they're ultimately the one, if you'll recall, when we had this discussion before. What, how bad it looks, it, you give the voter a choice. I mean, this is how bad it looks. And we can make these kinds of cuts. Uh, and not, not bash services too bad. If we can't get something in this next order. Um, then we're going to have to either im- implement. Uh, a fact, uh, a, a tax on something. Or we'll have to cut this much more and let them, give them the information, let them make the, the choice.
I, I know, I understand that, Rich, but there's just another side to that. When it goes to the voters, it takes a campaign. A campaign takes people to run it. And it takes contributions. So when it came to the police and fire renewal. And who paid for the expenses to that, which was minimal, thank goodness, this time, but I paid for it. I did the work to get the voter's pamphlet statement out there to make sure we got the filing done. I didn't see any of you help, offer to make a, you know, help me out. Um, but other words, if you're going to do something like a utility fee and go to the voters. It's going to take a lot of volunteers to get the word out. It's going to take a lot of education to the voters. And it's going to take money for the voters. I mean, a vote to get, to get a measure in front of the voters. So it's not, it's easy for. All of you as decision makers to say you want to go that route, but then there's who's going to be the worker bee to make it happen. So, and, um.
Who do you work for?
So.
I don't, I don't work for, I don't work for staff. I work for my constituents. As Dick Olson said, he doesn't work for the city, he works for his constituents. And it's my, my bosses are the twenty thousand out there that, that vote or not vote for me.
But, but who's going to do the campaign is what I'm saying. It's not, it's easy.
Give them the choice on the, if you give them the information, Mayor. They can make a decision. Smart folks.
But you can't, once the decision would be made, city staff not produce, take a word about the campaign and cannot produce any material. Um, you have to have a separate political action committee for all of those expenses. So.
I agree.
There's said than done. I had done every one of our police and fire. You know, levy campaigns and it's not easy work. So, um, Bessie?
Yeah, um. After all this, this past year, we've been talking about it, talking about it. And yeah, going to the voters sounds great, but yes, I understand what you're talking about. You know, you have to have a campaign, you have to get the, you know. Unless we could make, uh. Set meetings and whatever for all seven of us. To do it. It's just gonna, it, it's just gonna be words. And I, I'm. I'm getting to the point where I think people are realizing that. You know, if they want, if they want the public safety and they want, um. Services and, I mean, I, I'm thinking that we may need to, we don't, we don't have to make it a huge one. But I'm thinking that we may need to. Implement one ourselves and then see how that works out, but. I just, to take it a chance of going to the voters and stuff, we're going to be in the same boat. So I think that. We need to really, really think and maybe change our minds about, um, initiating a fee.
Anyone else? Have any comments? Okay, Peter, what's next step?
Well, um. We've got, I've taken notes on suggestions for business license or permit enforcement. Uh, for a question about whether or not a levy can go to the voters by November. And what I wrote down as a council innovation award for, um. Frontline employees or really any employees who come up with cost savings for. For the city. Um, and then we'll come back and we'll answer the, the questions about the utility and, uh. Give Alex a chance and all of you a chance to, to think more on this and, and, um, come back next time with. At the next work session with, with more to talk about.
Okay, all right. Any other questions over that? Okay, thank you, Peter.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, and you did very, very good presentation too. So thank you. Really spelling it out, really letting us know we're up again. So appreciate it. Good job. Okay, um, and thank you, Budget Committee members also for attending. As you can see that, um. So things, it's not, um, a very rosy picture out there. And when we find out how much our property tax revenues will be. I most likely the bud, will be convening on the Budget Committee. And all of us will be, um, together trying to see, um, how we're going to be able to make sure we get that balanced budget. Okay, all right. Thank you. And next item is the League of Oregon Cities, um, legislative priorities. And Peter, this, on page ten.
Yeah, and I've, uh, kept my mic open, so I'll just stay on the floor here. And I would, uh, open up here by saying, this is. The League of Oregon Cities has asked us or invited us along with every other city in Oregon. To offer up what our four priorities are as a city. Uh, for their legislative agenda, for their, for what they're going to go to the legislature and lobby for. It doesn't mean they won't lobby for the other stuff. One of the four top priorities of each city. So I'm, I would ask you all not to spend a whole lot of time on this. Holly has, uh, already sent you emails requesting your top six, so she could come up with a top four. And, um, this is how the top four finally, uh, shake out. So, um. Two, uh, Counselor Olson hasn't, hasn't voted yet and Counselor Sykes, uh, they're welcome to vote. Or they're welcome just to look at those four and say, hey, that, that works for us too. I think it's quite obvious that COVID nineteen economic recovery investments is pretty important. Uh, local governments are taking it, uh, very badly. Um, they're bearing the brunt of a lot of, a lot of the pain and a lot of the, uh, negative impacts. Um, infrastructure financing and resilience is another one that's quite obvious to me. Um, mental health, service and delivery. We, we often talk about our, um. Problems with homelessness and certainly mental health is a key component of that. And then property tax reform, we just spent the last forty-five minutes talking about the imbalance. Um, in our, uh, the way we are resourced. Not all of it is pandemic, a lot of it is systemic. And that, that property tax reform would, would address that. So at this point, I would invite, uh, you all to discuss if you like, or, or Counselors Olson and Sykes, if they want to. Throw their top six in there.
Mike?
I, hey, I, I'm good with where this is going after seeing it. Um. I, as long as I've been on council, I, I have a hard time with the League of Oregon Cities. I feel like they're another layer of, anyway. So I have my own ideas on the LOC, but the way this is headed is fine with me.
Yeah, okay. Bessie?
Yeah, um, I was on two of the committee. Got reports from others and. I believe that no matter what we put forward, um, I was talking to Peter earlier today and it's like every city. Is a different element in their own. And so. I don't think, you know, what we say may make a difference, but I really think that if we send this forward. We'll just see, you know, uh. What flushes out. I don't think it's really going to make that much of a difference because there's a, many other cities and. Everybody's got their own preferences. So, um, I'm good with what we have here. Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Okay, Dick, did you want to weigh in?
No, I don't thi- I don't think you can hear me.
Yeah, but we can hear you.
Can you hear me?
Yep, uh-huh.
No, I'm usually disconnected. I guess I did get connected. Uh, I think the, uh, we need to do something about the purse costs. The, uh, state doesn't seem to want to do anything about that, but they should. Then the other one is the healthcare costs that are eating us out. And I sent those into Holly last Friday, but I guess they didn't get on the list. So. Now, those are my concerns.
Okay.
And I think, I think property tax, our property tax system has to be. Reformed so that we can talk to the voters about our needs. And it can be a property tax instead of a fee. Fees put too much of a load on. The people who are just barely getting by and that, uh, group of people in our city, not only Albany, but cities across the state and the nation. Uh, people that are on the ragged edge are becoming more and more part of our, uh, population. And, uh, they don't need to bear the brunt of these fees. Needs to be either an income tax, preferably an income tax or a property tax.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, Dick, they didn't have on the list for us to choose, which would have been on healthcare. And I wish it was there.
Why not? But.
That is, right.
You can tell them that.
Right. I just wish that would be something they could work on because that is such a huge cost, um, for all. And, um, and it's not fair. I mean, you've got some employers paying healthcare costs and many that don't. And. Um, you know, all government provides that, you know, you know, provides the service. You want to have. You know, quality employees and it's just, it's not fair across the board. It's not evenly distributed on that. So I agree. But other word, but we don't have that on the list to choose from. So it looks like there's the COVID, the infrastructure, mental health service, delivery. Um, and property tax reform are the four. Um, four items there. Is council okay with moving those forward or anything else? Mike's got a thumb up. I see three thumbs up. Um, and Rich, your thumbs up and then Alex. Okay. I think we have everyone that said that would be DJ, whoops, I lost the screen. I think you've got it, whatever is in the yellow on that.
Can I say something, Mayor?
Yes.
Vote for talent correctly, because I voted for the COVID and it's not showing on the screen here.
Yep, it has you down for the COVID.
I don't see that from my.
Where the yellow.
Other Johnson.
Yeah.
I'm looking, I'm looking at Bessie's line.
Yeah. Yep, it has that down. So the COVID, infrastructure, mental health and property tax reform. So, okay? All right. Everyone seems okay with that, right? So, um, I think Holly will probably be sending those forwards to the League of Oregon Cities for, I think. Okay, all right, thank you. Um, that's it for that item unless, Peter, you had something else on that item?
Just thank you for, uh, taking part in that discussion. And I, I'm, 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 I have mixed feelings about beer tax not being increased.
I, I know. I'm surprised it didn't make the list, Peter.
Make other communities mine, it might make their list. So we don't know on that, but yeah. Okay, business from council and up on my screen would be Bill on the top.
The, uh, the only thing I have is to add to what Mike was saying on the permits and when you get caught. As far as a fine, the thing I ever experienced. Um, is that if you failed to get a permit, the, the fee was doubled. So if it was going to be a hundred dollar permit and you didn't get one. They charged you two hundred dollars. So for what it's worth, that's all.
Okay, all right. Bessie?
I was saying, Bill, is that, would, would that be? A two hundred dollar fee or penalty plus, then they have to get a bid for a hundred dollars? I think that sounds good.
Well, they just doubled the amount. So. You say, if you had gone in and bought a permit, if it was going to be a hundred dollars.
Uh-huh.
When you got. You're paying two hundred dollars, you're paying twice, you're paying a hundred dollar permit plus a hundred dollar fine.
Okay, so it's just a hundred dollar fine then?
Well, no.
Well, double, depends what the permit costs.
It's double. If it was a two hundred dollar permit, be a two hundred dollar fine.
Okay, so you have a permit plus, gotcha. Okay, I see that. All right, that sounds good. Um, nothing for me tonight. Thank you.
Okay, it's Bessie, Mike?
Um, tomorrow morning at eight o'clock, between eight and eight-thirty, the old red. Oberto store is going to the ground.
Wow.
The, oh, the store, not the plant.
No, the plant will eventually go, but. Um, the YMCA is moving forward. Um, as fast as they can with, uh, getting that, uh, whole corner revitalized. Um, even in the COVID, they're still moving forward and trying to make that happen. So tomorrow morning at eight. Between eight and eight-thirty, the backhoe comes and with a track hoe and it start to get tore down. And Bill and Bessie on that permit, I don't think a double permit is enough. Um, I think it should be painful. Because what's happening is those people that aren't getting permits are stealing from everybody else that has. And I think it should be, I should be, I think it should be painful. And so that they don't do that again, because a double permit, a lot of times. They'll just, because it's all goes to getting caught. And a lot of times they'll go and go and go until they get caught. And that could be. Six, eight months. And by that time they've done ten, fifteen different permits. Um, and so one double permit is no big deal to them. I, I'd like to see it be a big deal.
Yeah, kind of like they do it and ask, and, uh, ask for forgiveness later. Yeah, exactly.
So maybe we can have staff check with other cities to see, some might double it or triple it or kind of see what. Do on, um, um, permits on that.
Bill's ready. Bill's got something.
We had.
Yeah, I think maybe do a little more research and come back to council.
Yeah, I think maybe do a little more research and come back to council. As an example, uh, the union electricians in Oregon have a, uh, an individual that, uh, kind of will take tips and plus snoop around and so forth. And they're looking for people, union or non-union, that don't have permits and also that are using, uh, unlicensed people. Now, not every trade requires licensed people. But my point is in some cases, uh, these people are violating state law. And so there is some meat in there with state law. The other thing, if you recognize that the reason for a permit is primarily for the safety of, of the individuals, whether they live in that building or they're going to work in that building or whatever the situation is. So they're circumventing that process as well. And, uh, so there's a lot of ways to approach this. It's not just that they didn't buy a permit, there's, there's public safety, there's state law. Uh, so yeah, staff's got a little work to do, I guess.
Peter?
Yes, ma'am. You know, the wonders of technology, I, I can talk to Jeff Blaine and, and he, he would confirm that what, uh, Counselor Sykes, uh, is bringing up is, is an important issue. But he also mentions that it's fairly easy to close a loop on that, but he reminds us that, uh, those are building division permits and as such, they're not in the general fund. So they wouldn't really have any effect on the general fund. It's still an important issue though, and we will come back to you with, with suggestions on how to close that. But he also points out that the state mandates what we can do for fees and penalties related to work without permits. So there are some upper limits, there are some guidelines. Um, our, our penalties, our penalties used to be higher, but we were forced to change them, uh, to meet state requirements.
Okay, all right. And is that it, Mike?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
All right, and Alex?
I've, I'm, I have nothing today. Thank you.
Okay, and Dick?
I don't have anything.
All right, and Rich?
Well, back to the permit. Given the fact that the fine is not a permit, uh, you could call it a fine instead of calling it having to pay just more for a permit. And that way it would not be, or maybe wouldn't be, uh, subject to, um, being kept inside the, inside the system and could be used for other things. That's all I had.
Okay, all right. And I didn't have any this evening. Uh, Peter, did you?
I've talked enough.
Okay. All right, um, staff have anything else? I don't see any screens on there, just a bunch of initials. So, okay. So with that, uh, we will have our council meeting on Wednesday night and that'll be virtual. And with that, we're, we're adjourned. So thank you, folks.